A motion, uh, well, we're gonna call in your order. Uh, your president, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I need a motion to Madam Seaview's agenda. Linda? Jason? Uh, our favor? I oppose. Okay, hearing of the public, I don't see any public here, so. All right, we'll address any questions as we receive them. Okay, moving on to the personnel consent agenda. I need a motion for the personnel portion of the consent agenda. Danny? And a second, Kathy? Any questions regarding the personnel section of the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? I oppose, that's carried. Okay, the remainder of the consent agenda, I need a motion. Jason? And a second, Linda? Any questions regarding the four remaining remainder of the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? I oppose, that's carried. Okay, I can have a presence report, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Green.
Okay, so thank you, um, won't spend too much time tonight, but first, really just want to recognize the board and thank them for all their support, um, in all these past several months as we've come back home from school and certainly the group that's out here tonight, entire staff, so we're very appreciative. It's been a lot of work, a pretty significant plan we've put in place. Uh, so far in the first two weeks, I think we've learned some things, uh, that we've done very well and learned some things that we need to do a little bit better, uh, make some adjustments, so. And the principals here tonight, they're just gonna kind of give an update of how things have gone in each of their buildings and some of the things that they're working on behind the scenes. Uh, just another note as well, we do have the IT help desk that's up there running, so it's very helpful for any students who are out of the remote at any certain point in time to contact the IT help desk. And we have a lot of students that answer those phone calls, uh, for adults and for other students, so. They're very good, they're very sharp, they know what they're doing, so it's a good system that we have in place. Uh, one of the things that we'll be talking about is probably around week seven or eight, we will be taking a look at contacting our remote parents and having, uh, some surveys done around what their choice option might be in 10 weeks, if they're considering to come back to in-person learning or if they may just stay at remotely. Um, so we'll have a better idea as far as what that looks like in terms of our numbers and our space and being able to socially distance in that setting, so we've got some work put out ahead of us up there to see what those numbers will look like around that time. So, can we accommodate? I'm uncertain if we can come up with some plan to accommodate, do I expect 100% of the kids to come back home? Um, but I do think that what we have to do is look at all of our large spaces that currently have available, such as auditoriums, gyms, cafeterias, uh, you know, currently any OBS or apartment rooms that do, might be able to fit more students based on those numbers. So we have to get really creative and looking at, um, the social distancing requirements and how many students we could have in a particular area, and then it's gonna depend on where's the numbers of the kids at certain grade levels that are coming back, um, and then we'll have to go from there. So it's gonna take a lot of planning and preparation from that standpoint. I don't know if we expect a huge shift at the moment, um, it's still fairly quiet, I think two weeks in, I think there's still a lot of watching and waiting to see what's happening, but we're already working on that and having discussions about what those options might be, because it certainly could be challenging. Uh, so just talking about challenges a little bit, I know the principals will probably even touch on this as well, but when you look at our plan that we put in place, um, where our students are assigned to each classroom, one of the reasons we did that was to create consistency for kids. And we're starting to see after just two weeks, a number of kids that are having to go out of school with various symptoms that may or may not be related to COVID, which require them to see a doctor, get a test, and potentially quarantine for a certain number of days, so. We're already seeing that transition happen, we're seeing some kids that, um, you know, maybe an influx of a few days before they can get to the doctor, but they're able to log into their classroom, they know who their teacher is, uh, so there's, from that standpoint, as little as disruption as possible, so. We're working through some other, some other things there, the principals will talk about tonight, but we're seeing that with students and staff, and we've got a couple of examples where we have staff right now that are teaching their students remotely from home because they're required, uh, to be out of quarantine, so. So far, as best as we can do, it seems to be working okay. As I said, early on in this process, nothing would be perfect, um, and we're gonna face more and more challenges every single day. Uh, on the construction update, I just want to bring up this week, mostly driven into the parking lots, all the parking lots have been updated around the middle school and high school, and striped. Um, if you had a chance to get down into the lobby area, uh, all the flooring in the lobby area has been redone, it's terrazzo flooring, uh, their district logo in the middle of it, it turned out really sharp. Uh, we have some classrooms, uh, on the wing near the high school library, downstairs and upstairs, uh, that have been revamped, and they've all been painted, new lighting, new flooring, so those classrooms have been freshened up. Uh, AES, as I mentioned before, we're about ninety, I mean 98% completed on the nurse's office. It is functional and useful at the moment, uh, there's some things, we're waiting on some doors to come in that are on backboard, so there's, there's little things there that we're addressing. Uh, most of the flooring should be in by the end of this week, so all new flooring in Everlake Elementary School. And they continue to work behind the scenes during the day, uh, behind the wall, where the innovation wing is gonna be for big steam and art and all that, so it's a big, long wing that's gonna turn into a really nice space for, for kids and staff, so that's, that continues to happen and working away, and, um, we expect that to be, be ongoing during the next few months. Um, that's all I really have, again, I want to thank the board, I want to thank our, our administration, our staff, our students, our families, they've been great, uh, this is, again, this is a lot of work for everybody, parents, students, staff, administration, there's nobody that's working less, uh, this year than they have, than they have in the past, so I appreciate all the work that they're doing. So now, um, I don't know which one of you guys wanna go first, if you plan to go together, I'll just stand in the mic for our principal, Mr. Francisco, Mr. Schofield, Mr. Beatty, just gonna kind of give you an update of how things have gone.
Well, good evening, um, I'm very pleased to report that, uh, at Everlake Elementary School, it was pleasantly smooth, very smooth opening, I must say, but as I was trying to think of the words that were in the script for the first two weeks, but, uh, one of the words that came to mind was, for an elementary school, it was surprisingly calm. Kids usually come in the building, they're running and hiding and pushing and jumping with the masks and the social distancing, it was almost an eerie calm, it was a bit of a challenge that I used to. So in that regards, um, it was different for me. The other thing too was, uh, I put down the word emotional, because it was very challenging when little kids come up to you and they wanna give you a hug, "Mr. Beatty, hug me," and it's like, "No, um, we can't do that this year, but I can give you one of these." Uh, that's, that's a little bit of a change too, but we're all adapted to it.
I, I would also like to add that I was remarkably surprised at how well and smooth, uh, the kids have adapted wearing their masks, um, I've had no issues with meltdowns or things of that nature. Um, the teachers have done a phenomenal job working in what I would consider to be safe mask breaks throughout the course of the day, getting the kids outside, it's nice, it's, it's nice to see them utilizing the tents, going outside, utilizing the whole campus, um, the masks have, we, we managed that quite well. Uh, for me as a principal, Everlake is a little different than other places, one of our biggest challenges was because of the construction, we made a change on the routing for the pickup and drop off, that was a significant problem for us. Uh, I really have to publicly thank the Everlake Fire Department, um, place of services, like auxiliary services there, they were a tremendous help the first week coming over and helping us direct traffic. Uh, we've been able to reduce the time that it takes to drop off and pick up, maybe 30 minutes, less than two days, so. That really requires tremendous effort and signage, uh, with working with all sorts of departments and people, and as well as educating the drivers, which was a big piece, so really my hats goes off to everybody that helped out. I'll let you talk a little, I see mine are scheduled, I don't want to talk about that.
Yeah, so, um, I mean, adding to that, thank you transportation for what they, you know, uh, being flexible, families, parents have been amazing with, I mean, let's face it, the opening week part, not getting parents in and out, dealing with transportation, everyone's been amazing from that standpoint, like Tom was talking about. Uh, the other big thing that I would say is challenging is, Tom and I, we're pretty much together all summer lining Skype lists and making sure Everlake and McQuiggo are the same. Uh, we know there's a lot of challenges with that because of the amount of students in both buildings, uh, but I think our staff and our leadership team did an amazing job doing that, and it gives us the flexibility to be able to work together and really troubleshoot any issues together instead of ever having completely separate items to work off of. Uh, and in reality, I think the big thing that we talked about the most was, our staff has done a great job, and we've been preaching this since day one, building that community in the classroom. Uh, they've been phenomenal with it, and they have faced every challenge that's come up, and we told them, every single week, it's gonna be a different challenge. It might not be insane, it'll be different, and they've done a great job getting through those situations. From a teacher's side of things, knowing it, sometimes we get stuck in routine, and we have tried to preach to them that they'll understand, it's okay that something might not work exactly the way you wanna, and we're gonna have to regroup and come back together and say, "Well, worked what didn't." And we're starting to see now, as difficult as technology might be at times, uh, as challenging as the schedule might be, we're working together and communicating, saying, "What's working, what's not? How can we create more time for each other with kids to work together in PLC time?" Uh, and it's starting, we're starting to hit it, I, I mean, I talked to a few public teachers today, as Corey just said, we had teachers who had to be out, um, and I walked by that grade level today and it was seamless. It, it might not have felt that way two days ago, uh, but today, the kids jumped on, the teacher's sitting right on the computer screen, and the kids were in it from the second they started the day, they had gone. And we had students who were out because one had poisoned, I think, they immediately jumped on. It doesn't have to do with COVID either, these kids are starting to, I'm just giving proof of what it's gonna be like virtually, and I think we're starting to hit that strike, we're gonna face challenges as well, but the thing that we're trying to preach is, you know, with every challenge, it's how can we make it matter? How can we continue to improve and focus all that we can control?
Yeah, just, just to build off that, I really think it's important for the public to know that, um, it, it would be not accurate to say that we are still in crisis mode, and I think that, um, we are absolutely having conversations that are deep and rich about teaching reform, modifying curriculum. Uh, we are no longer, uh, just trying to survive, and I would really credit a lot of that to the work that our teachers did, dedicated to the summer work that they did. A lot of teachers spent a lot of time working with students over the summer, which really started off the year with heavy anonymous teachers that already had solidified these skills, which are going back in the classroom to be able to teach the kid, teach their colleagues these skills, and there's a number of students who are already like, "We did it all summer, so they're bringing it home." Um, I would echo that idea that synchronous learning has been a lifesaver, because we've sent out a number of students and they're not missing a beat, um, they're able to log on and that they're able to go in and out, um, almost without incident. So that was a really good decision that I think we made. The teachers now are gonna move a place where with the PLC models, their, their collaboration is allowing them to make videos. I, I think it's accurate to say, I, I don't want to downplay the amount of work that goes into this stuff, they are working very, very hard, um, but they're proving that it's a model that is effective, that works. Now the challenge is to sort of, how do we sustain it and not hurt people out? And how do we move to a place where we can work smarter and harder? Um, they are building libraries where they're sharing videos, they are collaborating, there are people within the grade level of expertise are taking the subject area, making that video, they're along, uh, they're showing it to the rest of the grade level so that they are, they're sharing them below. So we're, we're getting better as time goes on.
Absolutely, and to kind of lead on the count too, that collaboration is not, honestly, it's amazing, it's not just between the elementary buildings, um, another example, we have a ELL student who, the family chose virtual for safety purposes, and that's what they wanted, uh, and we had to work together to figure out how are we gonna get that student additional support? When in reality, you're, you're gonna have a tough time, and then I sat down and we said, "What can we do?" So we have a Spanish teacher in the middle school who is working on his own time to give support to that student, and it's amazing, if you walk by at free time, and they're both speaking Spanish, and he's helping them with math problems, with science, with social studies, with reading, with writing, and it's clicking for him. You can see the student feel comfortable again, and that's because of the collaboration, not just between elementary, but all buildings, so that, that's been a huge plus, and we're seeing success in those things because we're working together.
Yeah, I'm kinda echoing what I'm thinking that Phil and Tom said, and, uh, I guess it started this summer with the committees that we put together to kind of outline and figure out what the plan was, and our plan is pretty good, um, you know, I, I don't wanna say that there are problems, was absolutely, we did have some problems, but the plan we put forward, um, for the school year, it was a pretty good one, and everyone in the room, the teachers, uh, school board members, central office, we've done a great job getting ready for the start of the year, and, uh, it's been a good start to the year. Um, you know, from, let's just use Tony as an example, with transportation, um, one of the things that, when we talk about problems, our first week with transportation was chaotic, and I think Tom had mentioned that a little, uh, from an Everlakean standpoint. By week number two, we had it pretty smooth, uh, arrival of the system times, we're, we're cut in half, and we're getting kids out in about 10 to 15 minutes, um, at the end of the day, which is day number one and two, it was 35, maybe 40 minutes by the time we got through town, so. Tony and the staff did a great job, we're definitely in Diane and trying to, to get us on track, so, uh, it was great, um. You know, another thing that we talked about, when we talked about things that we wanted to improve on, um, we're kind of tasked with our lunches, like, what do we do with the kids, where are we gonna put them? We have a new gymnasium, some in the high school cafeteria. What we did is we took our middle school students and are actually sending them down to the high school to get their lunches, to condense that, uh, server area, and then heading back over to the middle school. And Emily and Diane, along with Billy, Edwards and Bernie Atkins, Nancy and the kids, they're doing a great job. It's seamless right now, uh, the kids are moving, no issues, um, Emma sent a picture last week of her sixth graders, it was kind of funny, watched them all separated six foot, um, next person comes out, they take this six foot, go to the next spot, and they wait, so it's kind of neat to see, um, they're doing a great job in there. Temperature checks in the morning, uh, it's going smooth right now, we're getting kids in, uh, from the buses, buses are dropping off one bus at a time, we're, uh, we're getting at the front doors, the staff having down, the kids having down, getting to learn from class, no issues. Um, you know, in terms of the platform on Zoom, we, we have had some, some difficulties, um, with some connectivity, our IT department, um, Mr. Gladwell, Mr. Cox, Mr. Coach, Mr. Farrell, problem solver, teachers working through it, and the, the amount of incidents now that we have are really small, so. They've done a great job of kind of problem solving and fixing the problems that we had, so our kids are connected. Uh, the one thing I will tell you is, like, from an instructional standpoint, our teachers, um, it's been a huge lift going, having kids in person and virtual, but they're not missing people, they're doing a great job navigating both of those, um, in their classrooms. Um, we've also looked at intervention times, trying to get more intervention for the kids that are struggling, and, and we'll make adjustments into our schedule that are, that are accommodating for them. The one piece that we're really pushing at the high school and middle school has been the connectivity piece. Um, how are we gonna get the kids connected with the teachers, with, um, the teachers connected with them, and also the parents, and, uh, we put a lot of time and effort into doing that, and, um, Diane's gonna talk a little bit about what we've done and then, uh, we have sent two tech traps, another thing that we're really proud of, we're doing.
So when the closure in the spring, we found really quickly that connectivity was one of our biggest concerns at that time. So this year, we started strong, um, we were asked by the video to do a PDM connectivity and how to get students to feel comfortable and given that sense of belonging, so, um, our teachers are doing that. They, um, connected each adult with students, that they have between 10 and 15 students, each adult, and then each teacher for right now, and, um, they also have designated times to connect with the students, so we've given them some prompts and questions to kind of boost those students wherever they are, just let them know that they're in their corner, um, teachers are going up and beyond that right now, they're meeting with them during the week or whenever those kids meet them, sometimes it's nine o'clock at night, sometimes it's 2:00 AM, but, um, teachers are connecting with those kids, so they're doing exactly what we ask, so. We know that our goal for this is to achieve academic progress and success, and we believe strongly that this is the way we're gonna do it. So we're really excited about that moving forward this year, and then that will happen. And then Emily's gonna talk tech.
So can talk a lot about interventions, and we have that set for Wednesdays, there's a lot of intervention going on, but there's also a time for enrichment, and we are deciding to put a tech trap in that place. Our sixth graders have a period once a week where they actually, it's, we call it a scheme period, and there was a sixth grade teacher, and that just started today with tech trap running smoothly, um, so a little shout out to Mark Gladwell, got all the class lists loaded, um, and then seventh and eighth graders will be following soon, hopefully on Wednesday as well, and then ninth to 12th graders, which is something new this year, that there is a ninth to 12th grade cow on. We're really excited because those are cert, they can get certifications for some of the areas and the courses that they complete, which flows perfectly with our pathways, so we're really excited to offer that to our ninth and 12th graders, and maybe some of our eighth graders as well, who may have completed courses last year with the KD time trap. So they're ready to move on to the next level, even though they're eighth, seventh, eighth grade, they can take some of these elementary courses, so I'm really excited to offer that for them.
And it's just been a great start to the year, and, uh, I, I wanna say the administrative team, in my opinion, has done a great job getting us up and running, you know, it's been a good start, do you have any questions?
I'm going for them, and I know that it takes time to, this is all going aways, but, uh, I think that the stress levels have been high with some of our elementary teachers, and I'd be curious to hear what your plans are, to try to help them with the loads that they're, they're looking at.
Yeah, so, I mean, Tom and I, again, we talk about, we pretty much call every day and just say, "How did today go, what did you notice," there were some things. The biggest thing that, when we talk to our teachers is, I just wish I had that little more time to have a few more minutes with our virtual students, so be able to pull it in person separately, and the management of having both is difficult, I'm not gonna say that it's not, and they are spending countless hours trying to figure out what we're doing. The biggest thing that we have tried to preach about is that within that schedule, we want them to be flexible and understanding that, within the schedule, there are times that what you do one day may not work the next day, and it's okay to say to a virtual student, "I'd like you to sign on a little bit later today, because I want to spend some of that time with you." And I think we want to open up that schedule to make it more than understanding that. We're so used to a rigid, this is the schedule, this is the way it's gotta be, I think we have to kind of bridge off and be a little more open to saying, "Second grade might wanna spend a little more time with their virtual students towards the end of the day, it's okay for them to do that, it's okay to have in-person kids working independently on their iPads and pull your virtual kids into a workshop with them." Those are things that we're talking through, and the biggest thing I'm noticing is elementary teachers have gold followers, and they are so nervous about sticking to that schedule the way it's set, our job is to continue to stress with them. We're gonna make mistakes sometimes, things are gonna work, sometimes they're not, and it's okay, we're trying new things every day, we're taking on new challenges. Uh, Tom and I are also working on additional time where, within their specials, if we make it work with the support staff that we have, uh, we're looking to give them that even more additional time, besides that, the little techniques and strategies we're giving them to utilize more time in the classroom, uh, we're trying to give them additional time, maybe work between a half hour, so the kids can be used with our support staff in an alternative way, so they have more time for that intervention. That's the biggest piece that I think they want, is more intervention time for kids, whether it's in-person or virtual, and I think we're pretty close to getting that up and running within the next few days.
Maybe it's that, or no, it's, I think our teachers are, I mean, you can't say enough about them, but it's really interesting how committed they are to doing the best job they can, and if they just don't have enough time, that's a huge issue, and so, it sounds like you're, you're your guys to work that out.
Oh, absolutely, and, and that's the biggest thing that we're saying is, we, we wanna listen, because as Tom said, we want them to be able to sustain the great work they're doing. The only way to do that is if we listen to them and understand where they're, feel like they're in a good place, and where we can help them as best as we can, and I think we're gonna keep doing that every day and make it better.
Corey, you mentioned something about sharing resources from other buildings, did you want a library in the room?
Yeah, so we're, we're actually looking at both opportunities, whether we can share or restructure from within the buildings for staff to be able to help free up, uh, some more time at the elementary level, and we've also talked a little bit about what it'd look like if we can shift some, uh, some staff from the middle school or high school to come down or to the elementary schools to, to free up that, those staff a little bit, so we're looking at both options. Uh, the other thing we're talking about, uh, doing is, is we've been doing some tech trap at the elementary levels, it goes down to about grades three, four, and five, and tech trap is really, it's independent, self-paced, one of the greater issues this year has been, uh, you can do tech trap on the iPads, which you couldn't do before, so it really required kids that have to be in a lab, uh, on a PC, as opposed to now where they can take their iPads and actually work independently, a 20-week self-paced program, so we're looking at ways, potentially on Wednesdays, of how we can supervise that and be able to free up our, our grade level staffs to be able to, you know, work with, work with some individual kids or just work with remote kids or take a break, uh, I think those are all options across the board, and, you know, these guys have said, well, the, well, the misconception when you go into this, you know, hybrid model is that you think every second of the day that you're doing something, that those kids that are remote have to be logged in, and what we'll start to see is grasping more the independence of kids, and the real challenge, independence wise, is at your primary level, so you, you know, you're kindergarten, first, second grade level, uh, because they aren't as independent. Uh, so that's a challenging piece, I think, that, that we're working through, and these guys have pretty confident, they've got some solutions to take care of that, so. Um, I think, you know, as we make those adjustments, it's gonna get better and better, but again, it won't be perfect. Uh, you know, this, this is not an easy process, uh, of what we're doing, but I think, uh, one thing I would say is we're way ahead of the curve as far as what we're seeing, and, and when you get the structures in place and folks have gotten accustomed to constructing this way, you know, get give it six weeks, 10 weeks and it's going to, it'll be all packed for most of them. They'll have figured it out, collaborated with their colleagues and will have come up with best practices to this time. I said to work, not to work harder, just work, you know, to work smarter in the process. So I'm very confident in what's happening. I think right now, when I look at the numbers at our elementary level, I think five is the most remote kids we have in any class. Some of them, I think in that ballpark, it's any more than five. And then the class sizes range anywhere from nine to maybe 13 or 14 in a couple, a couple of grade levels where we have more kids. So again, it's work in progress. We recognize it's a lot of work and I think it's going to get better and better. And we continue to share those practices and make some adjustments.
I want to reiterate before Corey just said, and I think all of you guys, because I think I said this at the last meeting. You know, over 40 years of education, I'm going to say one thing. I never say I've seen it all. And certainly, I've never seen this interview, but you guys have done a tremendous job. The board thinks so, but our teachers as well. All you can do is keep those communications open as best as possible. And as Corey said, I couldn't agree more. It's totally fair. We don't expect it to be perfect. Just keep talking to each other and, and I know we'll get through this. So thanks very much to all of you. All right, so going on to district business, need a motion to accept the audit reports, correct? Need a motion to accept the audit reports of Representative C. Linda, Jason, any other questions about the audit reports? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's clear. We also have a votee's lease for a couple of our classrooms. I've heard a couple of classrooms that are leasing. I need a motion to accept that. Kathy, maybe the second, in the votee's place. Danny? Okay. And as I said, for a couple of classrooms, any, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's clear. So I'm guessing we don't have any board committee reports this. You do? Wait, wait, I was saying, you know, skip all right, get this right. No? All right. So I guess we did. Corey, anything else? Marcy, you said you wanted to... Okay, 42% of the tax question. Is that up? You don't think you have? I'm sorry. I always have those hard questions. Okay, then I need a motion to adjourn. Danny? Linda?